2025, and we will start with a pledge of allegiance. Will Commissioner DelVR lead us? Great, thank you. We will now begin with roll call. Let's start with Commissioner Velto. Oh, okay.
Here.
Carrie Romeyer.
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
Manny Basara.
Here.
Christina DelVR.
Here.
JD Drakulich.
Here.
David Jacomman.
Here.
Alex Velto.
Here.
We have a call. Thank you. We will move to item three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Do we have any public comment today? We do. Members of the public may call into the meeting to provide public comment by using the Zoom link provided on the agenda, specifically https://links.rino.gov/planing-03-05-25. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. We did receive correspondence for this item that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and entered into the record, and I believe you have a couple of request-to-speak forms. Yes, thank you. Do we have, before I do in person, do we have anyone online wanting to give public comment? We do not have anyone online with their hand raised at this time. Great, thank you. So we will start with those in the room. May I have Robin Palmer? Please approach. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Will you please start by giving your name and...
Yes, I will. Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and there's a few attendees here tonight. Put the glasses on. I'm Robin Palmer, climate and community advocate. I'm a member of a grassroots coalition of about 20 individuals from a number of organizations, including Sierra Club, Third Act, Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada, Climatiers, Make Roads Nevada, who have concerns about the impact of data centers on our community and more broadly about climate and affordable, equitable energy availability within the Truckee Meadows. The coalition represents many individual members. First, thank you, Commission, for passing a resolution at your February 5 meeting to encourage the Reno City Council to pause permitting of data centers. Got to catch my breath. Allowing a comprehensive study of the impacts, benefits, and impacts of data centers on our community with consideration of new policies, standards, or regulations on data centers. I was one of many individuals who gave public comment at last week's Reno City Council meeting in support of the Council directing staff to draft a text amendment on data centers with accompanying pause on data center permitting. As you know, Council did not agendize your resolution for their February 26 meeting and furthermore voted not to direct staff to initiate a text amendment. A Title 18 text amendment could have provided protections against the little controlled proliferation of data centers in our community. The standard set forth in the January 2024 administrative interpretation on data centers would be laughable if significant detrimental effects were not possible on our community. Is this being projected? Oh, here we go. This is from 18.08.501 Code Text Amendment. A text amendment can be initiated by City Council or the Planning Commission in that first column. The Council took inaction. The community has voiced our concerns. What needs to happen next is clear to me. I encourage the Commission to initiate a text amendment on data centers. Thank you for your service and for allowing me to comment.
All right. We also have Tyler Colton. May you come up to the front and start with providing your name.
Hi, guys. I'm Tyler Colton, and hopefully you can give me a little more than three minutes. So you guys brought up last council about, there was one up came before you. You guys all were kind of starting asking the right questions about Title 18, live entertainment code, what the entertainment zone meetings were about with the mayor, every head of staff, Jackie, Ashley, Lance, all of us. So I've kind of been spearheading this for the last year. I have come before you guys and talked to you about this Title 18 before live entertainment, and I knew it finally come to a head, and here we are. So what I, it's so nuanced, so I don't know if at some point maybe we could all meet and kind of discuss this because this is going to come before you guys from the mayor and from Jackie and from Ashley and from Angela. They're working on entertainment zones. So the, God, where to start? Okay, so you guys back in 2019 started the discussion, what is live entertainment? Is it DJ trivia, karaoke, music, dancing? What is it? So prior to that, each bar got a privilege license, which is your liquor license, and it was an add-on cabaret license. There was no time or anything put with that. If you were in certain zones, Midtown, like work, commercial use zone, as you know, it's a 24-hour ride zone. So we had the right to have live entertainment, music, karaoke, whatever it might be, under the cabaret license, correct? So then in 2021, during COVID, you had all the meetings in 2020. 2021, January, live entertainment code was passed for the first time, effectively changing the cabaret license and saying we could only have music until 11:00 PM. And not just music, that is poetry, anything, karaoke, live entertainment, dancing, anyone in an establishment who spontaneously dances to house music, like say at 1:00, past 3:00 AM, spontaneously dance, that breaks the code. That is against the law under this live entertainment bill. So what happened with you guys passing that, presenting to council, council adopting it, now has caused kind of a problem. And everybody at the city recognizes the problem. The problem is first, all of the businesses prior to that are now not sure, and the city's not sure, where they stand. Angela Fuss sent me, here is 41 pages of every single bar, restaurant that has a cabaret license in Reno, and every single one of them is completely different. There is no consistent time, there's no set level playing field. So they can go to Shea's. Shea's had to figure out how, after 30, 40 years being in business, to prove that they had a 24-hour allowance. Abbey's Highway 40, which we know has been there forever, they were actually shut down by code during one of the crawls, saying that they didn't have the right permits. So they've kind of backed off on that because they know it's really difficult for code to enforce. They can enforce it. You know, they'll tell you, code can't enforce this. And hopefully you guys will give me a few more minutes to really, because I feel like this is important.
So we do want to hear about what you have to say, but I think what we need to do is agendize for that so that we can actually dive in a little bit further. So what I will have you do is I'll just have you reach out, and then maybe someone here would be willing to agendize that for a future date. But for right now, I think it's best that we just...
I just want to come here and talk to you because it's such a nuanced thing that it's legally an entitlement's been taken away from the bar owners prior, and then now we're talking about creating a level playing field for everybody, and then how does the code look going forward? And the mayor and everyone will bring a different new entertainment-type zone codes to you guys.
I think we can have that conversation at a later day.
Yeah.
But thank you, I appreciate your coming forward.
Well, the later day is coming.
Great.
That's coming very, very soon.
Thank you.
Mr. Colton, I would also encourage you to submit written public comment, and that will get distributed to the Commission as well.
All right, so now we will move on to item four, approval of the minutes. We have these items for possible action. Do I have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Basara, motion to approve.
Commissioner Romeyer, second.
Can I just clarify for the record? That's for item 4.1, the minutes from the Reno City Planning Commission, February 5, 2025.
Correct. So move.
Did I hear two seconds? Just want to clarify.
Chair Romeyer, second.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Great, thank you. So we will now move on to item... I'm sorry. Oh, okay. We have a first and a second. Do I have, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, motion passes. Thank you. Also, I want to ask for some grace this evening, given that this is my first meeting. So I appreciate you guys bearing with me as we work through today's agenda. All right, so we're going to move on to item five, presentation of the Truckee Meadows Regional Trials Plan.
There it is. Good evening to the Commission. My name is Jay Howard, and I'm the regional trails coordinator for a program called Truckee Meadows Trails. By the way, spelling J-A-Y-H-O-W-A-R-D for the record. So I'm the coordinator for Truckee Meadows Trails, a nonprofit-based program. It's a regional trails program, and I'm an employee of the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation. TMT is a nonprofit-based planning and advocacy program for trails that has a regional reach and is overseen by a working group of representatives from local government, park departments, federal tribal partners, and the trails community, all the nonprofit and all the volunteer organizations that we have here in the region. I always want to kind of start off with why trails are important. We have all heard quite a bit about, and we know what the health and well-being benefits are, but we might not all be so familiar with the economic benefits. So this slide talks a little bit about that. It's from the Bureau of Economic Analysis. Their Outdoor Recreation Roundtable for 2023, these stats were just released this past year, November 20. So you can see in the table, on the right is the federal numbers for the number of jobs and percentage of overall employment and percentage of GDP. There's a lot of money that's involved there. On the left, you'll see where Nevada fits in, and I think that's important. You can see in that table, the middle column, percent state GDP, we're at number 10 out of 50, right? For states with the highest percentage of that recreation economy being part of state GDP. And then just to the right of that, you'll see Nevada as in the fourth position for increased percentage from 2022 to 2023. So pretty important economically as well, but obviously I think Nevada can do better. We've got great resources here in this state. So as you can imagine, we are climbing that ladder. So I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about this regional trails plan that we put together and the program Truckee Meadows Trails and how everything came to be, what we're about, what it is we're trying to accomplish. So goes back to about 2017 where this initiative was formed, started with a conversation with some federal partners and some local government parks, directors, things like that, where folks wanted to see one voice out of many and just to have things centralized on a regional basis. For all the different trail planning efforts that are going on across the region, we started to talk about how to centralize that. This was before my time, I came on in 2022. 2021 is when the Truckee Meadows Trail Plan and Report was put together. That was funded by EDON, and that became sort of the basis for the program. What it lacked was the action side of things, the implementation side of things. So that's where we moved forward, beginning in 2022 with myself being brought on with the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation and deciding that the action plan, the actionable side of this program, could be just what we simply termed as a regional trails program or plan, something that had never been done before in this region. So we got with the National Park Service and got assistance from their RTCA program. There's the process, you can read what's on the slide. Many, many meetings, working group meetings, some specialized focus groups, and lots of review and comment led us to, that's the cover of the plan up top there on the right. So our, our plan, you know, basically these next few slides, it's just kind of sections of the plan, just to give you a brief overview of what's inside that document. Of course, we've got an executive summary and introduction. Our plan boundary is defined as basically being the TMSA, which you're familiar with, but also the influence areas that we've defined around the TMSA, because we've got so many, you know, resources, trail alignments and pathways outside of the TMSA in a lot of these areas that are mostly Forest Service and BLM, but a lot of private property, especially on the east side in the Virginia Range, that sort of thing. I want to go back to key plan recommendations. It's important, and it's the reason why I'm here tonight, is that first bullet point, private sector developments, we want to be part of that, and we want to be a resource for that. There'll be more slides that talk about that. Collaboration on project planning and implementation, planning and design standards, that's something that we want to work on next, and so forth. So the first big section of the plan is the conceptual trail network. That's where we define what our existing resources are, what our planned resources are, and what our desired resources are. So put that all together, and it's sort of a desired future condition for our trail network throughout the region. You know, existing is what it sounds like. Planned is something that has some type of effort behind it already. It's got some form of planning behind it. Or maybe it's something that's in the works, something that's funded already and, you know, actively being built. And those desire lines, a lot of that came out of our public workshops that we held back in 2017, 18, and 19. And, you know, just based on a lot of public comment we got of what people would like to see, some of it feasible, some of it not. But we tried to kind of put that together in these desire lines that you'll see on a map next. There's the map on the left of the existing resources. This is a very data-driven plan that we have. So there's a lot of maps and a lot of GIS behind all of these maps. On the right, we've got other types of areas defined, such as trail planning areas, areas where a lot of work is going on or a lot of effort is focused in these areas. Like you can see, for example, you know, the Peabody area, there's a lot going on on Peabody. Trail hubs, places where a lot of trails already come together, but we need more as part of the network. And then connection corridors that sort of connect the whole, you know, region together. This is all very conceptual. Here's a map of the planned alignments and those desire lines. The desire lines are the ones in yellow and in purple or the dark color are the planned projects, the things that have been discussed, again, the things that are being worked on actively. And then in the appendix of the plan are a number of other maps you can see listed there on the right. One thing that we felt from the very beginning was very important for this program was to be a voice for all the development that's going on throughout the region. Every time we see the dust start to get kicked up and the heavy equipment to come out, planners from the trails community always wonder, are trails thought of? Are they considered? These developments that have trail and pathway components, are they connected? Do they connect anything to the outside? And, you know, sometimes, I don't, I wouldn't say a lot of times, but sometimes the trails are just checking a box, and it might be, you know, a dirt road to go straight up a hill, and the box gets checked. So we want to be a resource to make sure that we do better than that. We've worked with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, they're on the working group, to create this system that utilizes the data that we have, the TMT trail database. And if a development application comes across their desk, which is in proximity to one of our resources existing or planned, it kind of triggers a notification for us. So we get a chance to comment on that, on that application. So far, that's been working well. There's been, there's been two developments this year that we've made comment on. It was identified early in the process that roles and responsibilities be well-defined. So we've got a section that does that. What are the roles of the TMT working group, and then myself, the program coordinator? On the right is the next section, which is the implementation strategy. That's the part of the plan that is sort of based on the program and what the program does with this regional trails plan that we've got together. The very last thing we wanted to do with this plan is put together a document that sits on a shelf, like we always talk about, and gathers dust, and maybe somebody looks at it every once in a while. It was very important for us to have the program behind this whole thing to actively be the implementation arm of what we put together in the plan. So those are the different sections that are throughout the strategy. So this is an important slide. I think the next couple are almost done. What this plan does for the Truckee Meadows, you can read through that, but I'll go over it really quickly. The plan provides goals and objectives for planning at a regional level instead of everybody kind of operating as an island and working on stuff at Peabody or working on stuff down at Galena, you know, and the county doing what the county does and the cities doing what the cities do. Again, we seek to pull this all together. Provides key recommendations and guidance for trail planners and developers, so we want to centralize that information so that we're all kind of on the same page with things. Gives flexibility for planners to develop their own projects that meet these connectivity needs. So the plan isn't, there's a number of projects in the plan, but they're not well-defined, and there is no priority project list. It was, it was an active effort at just kind of leaving that to the planners and as opportunities arise for those, those projects to be brought forward. So, so we didn't really focus on a priority project list, for example. We wanted this document to serve as a reference document for trail planning in the region and something that promotes interaction with the, with the development community and private landowners. And obviously defines the concepts of connectivity, access, and sustainability in trail design. So like I mentioned, a plan created by the trails community for this region where everybody lives and a working group that enables many voices to become one. What we're doing now is moving the plan forward for approval and support with local governments. For example, the city of Reno has already adopted this plan. It went to the Parks Commission and then to council after that. And we've been to the Washoe County Parks and Open Space Commission and gotten their approval and a recommendation for adoption. We're still in that process, though. I hope to get this plan before the BCC as well, and then to do the same thing with the city of Sparks is sort of on the docket. But a piece of this for us was to get in front of the planning commissions and to work with the various, you know, planners throughout the region that, you know, the folks like yourself that are approving or recommending approval for a lot of these applications. And so that, that third thing, you know, requesting recognition and promotion of the plan at a regional and local planning level. I've been before the Regional Planning Commission. This was a stop that I wanted to make, and then I would, my, my plan is to go before Washoe and the city of Sparks, just like the local governments. That, that follow-up document is a plan that I have that I want to fund next and work on so that we can put together these design standards and common region-wide trail specs throughout the region. So again, everybody's on the same page. And this is it. I wanted to put this slide in. I didn't know if this was something that this body would pursue or be able to do, but just in case, this is a request for possible action. TMT seeks to be a resource for developers. We'd like to be notified of appropriate, any appropriate applications. Those applications with a, with a real strong or decided, you know, trails or pathway elements so that we can take a look and help be a resource, make sure we're connecting these properly, and in certain cases, if it becomes appropriate, take a look at, you know, what's planned and what's, you know, suggested for design to see if things are meeting what the trails community considers to be the proper standard for sustainability. So I don't know if that means adding us to the planning department cover sheet or just shooting emails to each other. Like I've already commented on a couple of development applications, and the latest one was a rezoning application, just to look for proximity of resources within these proposed apps and, you know, to look for any opportunities and to comment on opportunities for improving our trail network. So that's basically what I have, open, of course, to any comments or questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions?
Sure. Commissioner Basara. Hi, Mr. Howard. Thank you so much for that great presentation. I think it's maybe a question for Mike because I think you have an ask, and I'm just not sure where this fits into the life cycle of the applications before us. So Mike, would you be able to chime in on where something like this would best fit into the application process?
Sure. So we put out what we call our Development Review Memo, our DRM, on every intake cycle. So we take development requests twice a month, and then once they're deemed complete, we send it out. That DRM goes out to all the reviewing agencies and interested parties. So we'll get you added to that list immediately so that you get that. And when, that memo will actually have instructions on how you can provide comments. And that's pretty important to provide, it's those written comments, because then those do get forwarded to the Planning Commission and become part of the public record. So there's definitely an easy path forward to, to accomplish, at least getting it over to you so you can provide comments.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Sweet, thank you, Mike. And Commissioner Basara, for the record again, just for the broader audience listening, is there anything else that the general public can do to support the priority of this plan? Or how would you advise the general public to participate in this?
Yeah, I'm not sure. You know, I want acknowledgement and recognition, just understanding that we have a plan, so I'm doing as much as I can to, to just get the word out. It's, it's been fantastic with the city of Reno thus far and their adoption of the plan, and I work closely with Nathan and some of the others, Carino over there. And like I said, through Jeremy at TMRPA, he's been great. There's, there's been the opportunity to comment a couple of times already on city of Reno things that came across their desk. of Reno things that came across their desk, I believe is how that happened. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a simple thing to do to check these applications and these locations against our, our trail database. By the way, I think it, our, our trail database is very unique. It's GIS, it's, it's all of the trails, the soft trails and the hard pathways throughout our region. So it's unique in the region. I don't know of another entity, you know, government or otherwise, that has this database. So it's, it's a good resource for us to deploy to find out more about.
Yeah, this was really good.
How does that work with trails?
Yeah, I remember you presenting last month at Regional and it was pretty insightful then. And I think Mike teed you up already with that initial step, so hopefully that's a, a good path forward.
Yeah. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Basara. Anyone else? No comments?
Commissioner Velto, thank you for coming out tonight. I really appreciate the presentation.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyone else? I do have a comment. I, I thank you for the presentation also. I think this is an easy way for developers to try and add some value, additional value to their applications when they're being presented, depending on, you know, the application. But thank you.
Yeah. All about trying to make it easy and simple. So thank you.
So we will move on now to item six, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment, when a public hearing is heard, will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of this meeting. And for right now, we will, I believe we start with the disclose? No, wait. Okay. So we will start with a presentation from staff. Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, for the record, this is item 6.1, LDC 25-00038 Arlington Office Master Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome as Chair, Commissioner Villanueva, and welcome to the Commission, Commissioner Jockerman. Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record. Tonight, the first case that I am bringing you is LDC 25-38, which is the Master Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment for the Arlington Office Project. This project is about 0.31 acres in size and it's located on the east side of South Arlington Avenue, about 260 feet north of its intersection with West Plum Lane, within the Plumas Neighborhood Residential Core Planning Area Overlay. And if you're not familiar with the site, you may be familiar with Plum Gate. It's located just to the south. Part, the parcel is vacant and appears to have never been developed. The request before you is a master plan amendment from single-family neighborhood to suburban mixed use and a zoning map amendment from single-family residential, five units per acre to professional office. The applicant is requesting the master plan and zoning map amendments to allow for future construction of a two-story professional office building, subject to a separate entitlement and permitting process. Compliance with standards contained in the Plumas Neighborhood Overlay District will be addressed in that subsequent entitlement and/or permitting process for a future project. As we zoom in here, you can see that the general development pattern along the Arlington Avenue in that, in the project vicinity is commercial and residential in nature. You have, land uses immediately surrounding the site consist of offices to the south and west, shown here, and single-family residential to the west, north, and east. The key issue that staff analyzed is the compatibility of the proposed master plan amendment and zoning map, sorry, master plan at land use designation and zoning with the surrounding land use designations and development. Turning to the master plan land use, you can see that it's currently a single-family neighborhood and the proposed master plan changes to suburban mixed use. Though the existing single-family designation is surrounded by the same designation on three sides, it is bordered by suburban mixed used, mixed use to the south and the west. Extending the SMU designation, one parcel to the north to encompass the site is considered to be appropriate. Approval of the master plan amendment is subject to conformance review by the Regional Planning Commission and initial review by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency did not identify any potential conformance issues. Also on the screen, you can see four goals and policies from the master plan that are in support of the proposed requests. Turning to zoning, you have single-family residential, five units per acre currently, and that does conform to the underlying master plan designation. The proposed change to professional office requires a master plan amendment. Single-family five is intended primarily to accommodate single-family detached residential uses, of course, whereas professional office provides for office conversions and small office developments. PO is considered appropriate in transitional areas designated on the master plan or adjacent to residential districts, as is the case here. The requested PO zone matches the zoning to the south and the west and would allow development of an office building similar to the office buildings to the south and the west. Here are the allowed uses in the PO zone. The uses highlighted in yellow here require either a minor conditional use permit, which is an administrative review, or a conditional use permit with approval by the planning commission. PO does allow more uses than SF5, but they are generally low-intensity uses and several of those uses that are ordinarily allowed by right in other zones require a minor conditional use permit or a conditional use permit in the PO zone. A minor site plan review to address residential adjacency standards will be required for any future non-residential development on this parcel. Here are the development standards for the current SF5 and the proposed PO zone. I did want to highlight that basically the only difference is the lower rear setback on the PO zone. Here are the recommended findings. Staff can make all recommended findings. And here's the recommended motion. I am available for questions. The applicant is here. She is not making a presentation, but she is also available for questions.
Great. Thank you. Since we will not be hearing from applicant, we will provide disclosures.
I'm happy to answer any questions without you.
Actually, before we start with disclosures, we are going to see if we have any public comment for this agenda item.
I do not have anyone's hand raised. We did receive correspondence for this item that was forwarded to the commission and entered into the public record, but I don't have any request to speak forms either.
Okay. Is there anyone in this room who would like to give comment on this item? Doesn't look like it. Okay, so we will move on to commission disclosures. Let's start with those on Zoom.
Commissioner Draculich, I live nearby and frequently drive by that site. No other disclosures.
Thank you.
Commissioner Romeyer, yeah, familiar with the site? No disclosures.
Great. Commissioner DelVR?
Commissioner DelVR, just trying not to cough. I have been by the site and am familiar with it. That's all.
Commissioner Basara, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Villanueva, I live very close to this site. I'm familiar with the site. And I think we received one public comment that was attached to the application that I reviewed. Thank you.
Commissioner Jockerman, no disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site?
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Basara?
Thank you, Chair. This is Commissioner Basara. Jeff, just a quick one. We did receive a little bit of comment about, I think, traffic from the Dartmouth area, which is, I think, right across the street.
Yeah.
Right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Is, is all good there or is there any room for mitigating traffic issues or was that already accounted for?
So we certainly will factor that in at the appropriate stage. The zoning change is not the appropriate stage because we don't have a project to actually analyze in terms of where the driveway is and things like that. So certainly that will be factored in down the road when a, a project comes forward. It will need to come before this body again for a, sorry, it'll actually go through a minor conditional use permit, but it will be evaluated, yes.
Okay. So this is just kind of to move things forward, if you will.
What's that?
This is just simply to move things forward a little bit, the process?
The zone change in the master plan?
Yeah, at this, at this stage, really.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it really needs to come first before they can, you know, go through the process of developing a, a, a use that conforms with the PO zone.
Great. Thank you, Jeff.
Commissioner DelVR, do you have, did you have something?
I do. Thank you. Commissioner DelVR, a couple of questions and part of it is just me trying to kind of understand this a little bit more. There's a master plan amendment and then a zoning plan. Can you kind of explain those two and why they're in potentially that order?
Sure. So.
Thank you, sorry.
So the master plan, the current, is on the left-hand side, right? And that's single-family. So that's the underlying land use designation. The zoning that exists on the site, shown here, SF5, conforms with the underlying SF designation, okay? However, the proposed PO zone does not conform with the SF designation and therefore it requires a master plan amendment to that suburban mixed use.
Got it. Understand, thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. The other question I had, and I guess this goes to when plans are actually developed, like there's a bus stop there, is there enough parking? All of that will be part of the next phase, is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. They will. And as I, when I look at zone changes, I always, well, any kind of entitlement, I always give the applicants a heads-up on the various issues that they are going to need to address with their proposed development down the road, i.e. number of parking spaces, building heights, things like that. So the applicant is already aware of all of the considerations that they will need to factor into their development plan when they come forward with that.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Anyone online? Commissioner Romeyer or Draculich?
None for me.
Nothing for me. Ready for discussion if we get there.
Okay. I have a question. Jeff, do, for the master plan amendment and zoning amendment, are those in the neighborhood provided notice that this, this is happening?
Yes, absolutely. As with all applications, the, the noticing radius, they are required to, to notice the properties through the normal process, but also with a master plan amendment, there's an additional neighborhood meeting that's required to have been held and the applicant did hold that meeting at the library down the street and I attended that meeting. So you have one additional layer of, of neighborhood input with a master plan amendment.
Okay. What's the ra, just out of curiosity, I'm very close, I'm like two streets down and I didn't receive notice. So I'm curious, what is the radius?
So the typical radius is 750 feet or, Mike, is it 35 homes? Or 35, not homes, but 35 addresses. So, and it, it goes up from 750 feet if they don't get to the 35 within that area. So it's likely, given the small size of these parcels, that they got to the 35 within that 750 feet.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Draculich, you mentioned you had some comments.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. Appreciate that. Yeah, just real quick, my filter being a neighbor and even a Realtor, I drive by that seriously five times a day. I can't imagine that being a single-family residence. It doesn't really fit. So I'm very comfortable with the compatibility there. I think an office would be great. So I will be supporting this master plan amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Basara, happy to make the motion.
Go for it.
Yeah, all right. In the matter of case, LDC 25-00038, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to adopt the master plan amendment by resolution and recommend that City Council adopt the master plan and zoning map amendments by ordinance, subject to conformance review by the Regional Planning Commission.
Commissioner Draculich, I'll second.
That was a first from Basara and a second from Commissioner Draculich. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Good luck with your application or project. All right. So where are we? All right. So we will move forward to item 6.2, case number LDC 25-00006. We do have a, we do have a presentation from staff, but before, we are just going to take this a little out of order and we're going to do disclosures first. So we will first have the commissioners on Zoom provide their disclosures.
Commissioner Romeyer, no disclosures.
Commissioner Draculich, I believe we got some emails on this one and I am familiar with the site.
Okay. Commissioner DelVR?
Commissioner DelVR, I am familiar with the site and have read any communication that came through.
Commissioner Basara, familiar with the site, read and reviewed material. Fan of the restaurant.
Commissioner Villanueva, no disclosures.
Commissioner Jockerman, Madam Chair, fellow commission members and Madam Clerk, in the interest of full transparency on item 6.2, I'm disclosing that Kimley Horn is my employer. Here, the applicant, In-N-Out Burger, is seeking approval of a conditional use permit. And In-N-Out Burger is a client of my employer, Kimley Horn, which prepared the traffic impact study included in the application. On this matter, I sought guidance from the city attorney's office. I have been advised that I have a per se commitment in a private capacity to the interests of Kimley Horn under Nevada law, vice statutes 281A. I've also been advised that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of my employer. Accordingly, I will not be participating or voting on this item today. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting pertaining to this agenda item. Thank you. I will, I will now step out of the room.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Velto?
Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site? And I think I've heard of this restaurant before, once or twice. I, for clarity's sake, I'm a big fan as well, just like Commissioner Basara.
Great. Thank you. So we will now move on to presentation from Jeff Foster, staff.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record. The second case I'm bringing you is LDC 25-6, the In-N-Out Burger. I didn't hear in your disclosures what your standard order is. Number one, animal style? No, never mind. All right. All right. So moving on to the project information, the site size is about two and a half acres, located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Kitsky Lane and East Plum Lane, across from Little Flower School, near Worcester High School and Costco. The subject site is currently vacant with the exception of a 42-foot-tall pole sign and a parking area associated with a former Redwood Rotisserie and Grill that was demolished in late 2023. Five parcels will be merged and then divided into two parcels. The applicant is proposing a new fast food restaurant with drive-through service, outdoor patio seating, a replacement 40-foot to, 40-foot, 42-foot-tall pole sign, and associated site improvements on 1.95 acres. A Starbucks coffee shop, which will be subject to a separate entitlement process, is contemplated on the remaining 0.57-acre parcel. The request before you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow operations between 11 and 6, a pole sign over 35 feet adjacent to a major arterial and non-residential development adjacent to residentially-zoned property. You also have an alternative equivalent compliance to vary from ground-floor building transparency standards and a major deviation to exceed 100,000 lumens per acre sight lighting standard by less than 50%. As we zoom in here, the surrounding land uses include religious assembly and the Nevada National Guard Building to the north across Plum Lane, and auto dealership to the east across Kitsky. You have multifamily, an office building, single-family, and another fast food restaurant to the south across Margrave Drive, and an office building to the west across Orange Lane. In terms of the key issues we looked at, compatibility with surrounding land uses, code compliance, and alternative equivalent compliance, site design and operations, and traffic access and circulation. The zoning district is general commercial, nothing else to say here. The master plan land use, there are actually two master plan land use designations, urban mixed use and suburban mixed use. And here are 11 goals and policies from the master plan that are supportive of the request. So as we turn to the first major issue that staff looked at, compatibility with surrounding land uses. The site is bordered by two principal arterials, namely Plum and Kitsky, and Plum Lane is designated as an urban corridor. Fast food restaurants with drive-through operations are permitted by right in the GC zone and are typical of urban corridors. Residential uses and zoning to the south are located at least 275 feet away and are separated from the site by Margrave Drive. Residential uses will be further buffered by extensive site landscaping and a landscaped berm along the southern border, which will be shown later. Continuing, continuing with compatibility, the building is proposed in the northeast portion of the site. site, here, and the menu board and the speaker are located near the northern property line, here. The parking lot is designed to allow after-hours deliveries to be made by company trucks and employees without the need to use backup warning beepers, and staff is recommending condition number five to restrict construction hours due to the residential adjacency. Given all of the above, the proposed use is considered to be generally compatible with surrounding land uses in the area. Turning to code compliance and alternative equivalent compliance, ground floors of street-facing facades shall have transparent doors or windows at least four feet in height, at least, at least along 25% of the facade's horizontal length facing street frontages. The north elevation facing East Plum Lane cannot accommodate the 25% transparency requirement as windows are not appropriate, given the interior uses along this particular wall. An AEC encourages creative and unique design and allows development to occur in a manner that meets the intent of Title 18 through an alternative design that does not strictly adhere to specific design standards. An AEC authorize, authorizes a site-specific plan that is equal to or greater than the strict application of the standard. An AEC, if the AEC request is approved, all other applicable code requirements not specifically included in the request will need to be met. Under this framework, as an alternative, the applicant is proposing crossed palms formed into the side of the building along the drive-through line as an architectural enhancement. These crossed palms would increase the visual interest of the north elevation in conformity with the intent of the transparency code section per condition number six. Turning to site design and operations, the project includes an approximately 3,800-square-foot single-story restaurant building with seating for 84 people and outdoor patio area seating for about 40 people. It does include a new 42-foot-tall pole sign near the entrance from East Plum Lane, approximately here. The project includes 67 parking spaces, when only 25 are required, and the drive-through includes dedicated queuing for about 34 vehicles, and an additional eight vehicles can be queued without blocking any parking spaces. Employees will monitor drive-through and perform traffic management to keep the queue from spilling out onto Margrave Drive during peak operations. Employees will monitor parking, the parking lot, to ensure that onsite circulation flows smoothly, that access to and from parking spaces and the drive-through lane is adequately maintained per condition number eight. Continuing with site design and operations, the minimum landscaping in the GC zone is about, is, sorry, is 15%, which is about 12,700 square feet. The project includes about 19,700 square feet of formal onsite landscaping, which is about 18% of the entire site, and an additional approximately 18,200 square feet of off-site landscaping in the end dot right-of-way. The design includes a landscaped berm and over 20 feet of landscaping between the sidewalk and the drive-through lane along the southern boundary, and that is shown here. The landscaping is concentrated around the site perimeter on the north, east, and south to screen the site. This serves to screen the menu board and vehicle headlights in the drive-through lane from surrounding uses and the adjacent roadways per code. Also per code, drive-through lanes shall not be located within 100 feet of residentially-zoned property unless separated by a principal building or a six-foot-tall solid screen fence, wall, or landscaped berm, in addition to at least 10 feet of landscaping, and again, the applicant has included the landscaped berm as required. Last but not least, vehicle headlights in parking spaces facing an MF14 parcel to the south will be screened by perimeter landscaping per code. Finally, onsite design and operations, per code, internally illuminated signs may not be oriented toward residential districts, though indirect illumination such as halo illumination is allowed. Signs may only be illuminated during allowed hours of operation, and condition number nine says that any wall sign facing the residential zoning to the south is not allowed to be internal, internally illuminated. To provide well-lit driveways and paths of travel for safety, security, and visibility, the applicant is proposing a deviation from the 100,000 lumens per acre limit by approximately 49.8%. The project site plan and the photometric, photometric study demonstrate compliance with code requirements for lighting, and the applicant is aware of the requirement to turn off the relevant exterior lighting after their proposed hours of operation. As previously stated, the project is located along two principal arterials in an urban part of the city. The most concentrated sight lighting is around the building at the northern side of the site, furthest away from residential uses to the south. As such, staff believes that the major deviation appears appropriate for the site and the proposed use. Last but not least, traffic access and circulation. Access to the site is provided by three driveways, the existing right-in, right-out side access on East Plum Lane, and full site accesses on Orange Lane and Margrave Drive. The traffic study that was prepared for the project includes projected traffic generated from both the proposed project and the future Starbucks. Full anticipated build-out expected, is, is expected to generate approximately 4,048 daily trips, with 212 trips occurring during the AM peak hour, 371 during the midday peak hour, and 289 during the PM peak hour. Build-out traffic volumes result in the need for the following mitigation. Condition number 11 addresses changes near Orange Lane and East Plum Lane in the area here, and condition number 12 addresses the sweeping eastbound-to-southbound right-turn movement from East Plum Lane onto Kitsky Lane in the area here, and the Kitsky Lane to Margrave Drive improvement here. And those address all of the traffic issues. Here are the recommended findings for a CUP, for an AEC, and for the major deviation. Staff can make all recommended findings. And here's the recommended motion, and I'm available for questions, and the applicant is here to make a presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Peter Colmaticki, and I'm a development manager with In-N-Out Burger, and I'm excited to be here this evening to propose our third location in the Reno market. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff, especially Jeff Foster and Todd Landry, for the hard work and responsiveness during the development review process. Their coordination with outside agencies is truly impressive and should be recognized. I would keep my remarks brief, but I would like to spend a few moments touching on the history of In-N-Out Burger and equally as important, our proposed location. In-N-Out Burger was founded in 1948 by Harry and Esther Snyder in Baldwin Park, California. Now more than 76 years after they opened that very first location, with over 400 stores operating in eight states, In-N-Out still is a family-owned business. Every single In-N-Out Burger location is 100% privately owned and operated. We do not franchise. Harry and Esther's granddaughter, Lindsay Snyder, is the owner and president of In-N-Out Burger and continues this legacy and core values of quality, service, and community to this day. In-N-Out Burger operates from a clear and concise three-pronged mission-purpose statement. It is the guiding principle that shapes everything we do. This mission-purpose statement governs all our operations, hiring practices, company culture, and ensures that we stay grounded to our founding principles and values. Our mission-purpose statement is displayed on the screen and reads, "In-N-Out Burger exists for the purpose of providing the freshest, highest-quality foods and services for a profit in a spotless, sparkling environment whereby the customer is our most important asset, providing a team-oriented atmosphere whereby goal-setting and communications exist and to provide excellent training and development for all of our associates, assisting all communities in our marketplace to become stronger, safer, and better places to live." So how does this mission-purpose statement apply to In-N-Out today? Our motto is quality you can taste. All our food is made to order, and there isn't a single heat lamp, microwave, or freezer to be found in any of our kitchens. We are committed to only the freshest ingredients with hamburger patties made from 100% American beef that is boned and ground from whole chucks by In-N-Out's own butchers and delivered fresh, never frozen, to each of our stores. Milkshakes are made from real ice cream, we hand-leaf all our iceberg lettuce, and our french fries are hand-diced in stores from fresh whole potatoes. In addition to a quality product, we are renowned for our emphasis on customer service. At In-N-Out, every customer receives service with our signature smile, and your meal will be exactly as you order it. At In-N-Out, we understand that associates are the cornerstone of our success. We foster a team-oriented atmosphere that encourages growth, provides extensive training, and ensures that every associate feels valued and supported. Glassdoor routinely names In-N-Out Burger on its annual list of best places to work in the United States. In 2024, Glassdoor named In-N-Out as the sixth best place to work, where it was the only restaurant to be named in the top 100 places to work. This commitment translates into a positive environment that benefits not only our team, but the service we provide to our customers. In-N-Out Burger is proud to contribute to the economic vitality of the communities in which we operate. Our third location in the Reno market will create numerous local job opportunities, including approximately 45 store associate positions, plus additional support opportunities such as maintenance and landscaping. It will also provide competitive wages and comprehensive benefits that support career growth and stability. Beyond employment, our operations stimulate local economic activity, encouraging spending and supporting nearby businesses. Then, economic benefits extend further as revenue generated by our business helps support public service, infrastructure improvements, and community programs. This positive ripple effect reinforces our dedication to not just being the place where people come to dine, but a business that plays an active role in bolstering the economic health of Reno. Our investment in the city translates to sustained growth and prosperity for its residents and the wider community. The community is what has shaped In-N-Out Burger since 1948. As part of our mission statement, we are committed to assist all communities in our marketplace to become stronger, safer, and better places to live. We work with a variety of organizations seeking support with their fundraising efforts, including nonprofits, schools, youth support, city events, and much more. The company operates two foundations, the In-N-Out Burger Foundation, founded in 1984 by Esther Snyder, which focuses on helping abused and neglected children, and two, the Slave to Nothing Foundation, which was established in 2016 to help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by substance abuse and human trafficking. In-N-Out Burger underwrites all of the administrative costs of both of these foundations, so that 100% of the money raised is given back to our communities. I invite you to visit the websites for these foundations to find out more about the great things these foundations do and why and how we support the causes that remain close to the heart of the company. These foundations support local agencies and the communities where we serve. Over the years, we have supported numerous organizations throughout the Reno area. From 2022 to 2025, our in-kind donations, Spirit Nine fundraising, youth sports sponsorships, and college sports sponsorships have totaled approximately $75,000. In-N-Out Burger Foundation has contributed approximately $66,000 to the Children's Cabinet, Eddie's House, and the Northern Nevada Legal Aid, and the Slave to Nothing Foundation has contributed approximately $63,000 to the Awaken, Step 2, Inc., and University of Nevada Reno Foundation. We consider ourselves members of each and every community we operate in and are proud to give back in the ways that we can. Our goal is to be more than a restaurant, we aim to be a trusted, supportive, community partner. I will not duplicate all the information that Jeff has gone over, however, I'd like to expand on a few items about this project location. The current state of the proposed site is in dire need of redevelopment. The new restaurant would be a sleek, updated building, enhanced and efficient equipment, new sight lighting, and enhanced landscaping. It will be a vibrant improvement to the Plum and Kitsky intersection and improve the view along this major corridor. The new site plan is a generous 2.52 acres. Our project development proposes a new building, spacious outdoor covered seating, large parking area, new drought-tolerant landscaping, LED lighting, and energy-efficient mechanical systems, to just name a few. The parking lot will be well-lived for customer and neighborhood safety. The restaurant, drive-through lane, and parking lot will be meticulously maintained by In-N-Out Associates. We were thoughtful as to locating the building as far as possible from the adjacent property owners to the south and west. We did this, one, to provide visibility for our customers, and two, to minimize any impact on neighboring properties. In addition, our drive-through lane will be screened with a well-planted landscape berm shielding properties to the south. This landscape buffer is proposed at over 20 feet in width. The proposed landscape design enhances the aesthetic appeal of the property, creating a welcoming environment for patrons and associates alike. Key features include sustainable plant selections, modern, efficient irrigation systems, and strategic placement of plant material. In addition to the shade of the trees, the reflective concrete located within the landscape areas contribute to lowering the heat island effect, which will help reduce energy costs. Our intent is to landscape beyond our premises into the adjacent end dot right-of-way. The restaurant is a single-story, 38, 87-square-foot building, approximately 23 feet in height. The Mediterranean-style building will be a white stucco building with brick accent features and red awnings. Tower elements and the In-N-Out's signature red neon banding will provide vertical relief and visually pleasing focal points on all four sides. Parapets will screen the mechanical equipment. An attached cover patio and trash enclosure will be designed to match the aesthetics of the building. The building will accommodate seating for 124 guests, 84 indoor seats, and 40 outdoor seats. The hours of operation are seven days a week, Sunday through Thursday, 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Friday and Saturday, 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 a.m. Approximately 10 to 15 associates will be working per shift with three overlapping shifts per day. The proposed site has vehicular access via three access points. Access points propose a right-in, right-out off of Plum Lane and full movement from Orange Lane and Margrave Drive. Pedestrian and bicycle access will also be available from all sides of the project. This will further support the city's desired pedestrian and bike-friendly options for residents. With this proposed development, we are able to provide 67 parking stalls, where code requires 25. The parking lot is designed with optimal circulation and no dead-end parking aisles. This site plan has an onsite dedicated drive-through queue of 34 cars, with the ability to extend to 42 cars without blocking any parking spaces. The sporting queue and traffic analysis anticipates that the average queue at the proposed location will be 24 vehicles and a maximum peak queue of 30 vehicles, and our queue demonstrates that we can accommodate these amounts. Additionally, In-N-Out has management practices that assist with speeding up queuing times. For example, when the drive-through queue reaches the menu board, an associate is deployed to outside to take orders by tablet, and an additional grill is fired up to assist with drive-through operations. These two mechanisms improve the speed at which the drive-through, our, drive-through orders are delivered to our customers. I'd like to make one more point about the drive-through. For comparison, the Virginia Street location has a 12-car vehicle queue, and the Keystone location has a 25-car dedicated queue. Our proposed store is on a significantly larger site with a longer dedicated queue. With that, I thank you for allowing me to present our project to you this evening.
Thank you. Since we've already done disclosures, let's start with questions. Commissioner? Oh, I'm sorry, we need to do public comment. All right, so do we have anyone virtually appearing for public comment?
Does not look like we have anyone online with their hand raised. I do not have any request to speak forums. We did receive correspondence for this item that was forwarded to the commission and entered into the public record, however.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in this room who would like to provide public comment? Okay, it doesn't look like it, so we will now move forward with questions. Commissioner Velto?
Yes, I have some questions. I want to start with the applicant, and then I might have questions for you, Jeff. Can you go back to the slide, that last slide that compared the Keystone location to the South Virginia location? So I want to talk to you about traffic, and I'm kind of, it might be more helpful with this slide. So I, my concern is that there'll be a line that will extend outside of the drive-through and go past, like basically where Margrove, is it Margrave, where they turn in on Margrave? I'm concerned there'll be a line of cars there, and people from Margrave will be trying to turn in. So what, how would you prevent that from happening, and talk me through why maybe you think that won't happen?
So, let me go to that side. So this slide, if you can see the 30...
So, this slide, if you can see the 30, 34, and 42, the 30, based off of our traffic analysis, looking at 15 similar locations, show a max queue that we expect at 30. 34 is what we're providing in the dedicated area. Beyond that, we can extend to 42. Should, in the unlikely event that we get on beyond 42, we can go across that access point off of Margrove and still queue within the parking lot without affecting the surrounding streets.
And would that be part of the, like, traffic response by In-N-Out employees as they would make it sure that that roadway is clear?
Our store associates are so familiar with operations and how to, you know, we'll call mine the gap, bring the cars closer together, and from an operational standpoint, make sure that we're not impacting any of the local roadways.
Okay. And then, can you go back to that prior slide again? So, you said 34, and I'm just trying to, so the queue on, so the one I guess the In-N-Out go to is the one off Kitsky. So, can you go to the next slide? So, there's a 25-car queue there. Because I've seen times there where it comes out and it wraps around, and then it goes back to the building, in front of the building, and so it makes like a full circle. But you're saying it never gets beyond 34, 35?
What I'm saying is our data that's been reviewed by the city, and then, you know, our traffic engineer can speak to traffic more, is that we are anticipating a max queue of 30 cars. And we're providing 34 with the ability to extend beyond that 34 to 42 cars, which are representative, you see the 42 there, and should we need to go beyond 42, we could still extend that queue within the parking lot and manage that traffic within the parking lot without having to impact Margrove Drive.
Do you know, so assuming that there is that break, right, and they clear out the area, the roadway, how many cars would be able to queue on the other side? Do you have any idea?
My guess would be another 15.
Is there any time where one of In-N-Out's responses would be to close the ingress and egress off Margrove? Not, close all the time, but put up, like, roadblocks or blocks? Is that any?
No, but we do have, within our conditions, that we can't queue or spill into Margrove Drive.
Can I ask Jeff some questions about this? Yeah, thank you. Jeff, what are your thoughts? My concern is, based on the one at Kitsky, it seems like there's a lot more than 25, at least when I've been there, or it's not spaced, right? What are your thoughts on the kind of questions I'm asking?
Yeah, so, great question, questions, Commissioner Velto. So, I'd like to point out that when the applicant first submitted their application August of last year, the design actually, where the additional eight cars are shown on the screen here, going from 34 to 42, the design originally had parking spaces in that area. So, those additional eight cars would be blocking the parking spaces, north-south parking spaces, which doesn't directly answer your question, but my point is, is that the applicant responded to our suggestion to remove those parking spaces in order to effectively extend the formal queue, even though it's not designated as a queue where the drive-through signage starts. That's where the 34 is, but effectively, it makes it a 42-car queue without blocking any parking spaces. So, the applicant was responsive to our request, and that was largely based on personal observations. I've been going to In-N-Out since I went to college in Southern California in 1992 and have been to many In-N-Outs in, you know, throughout California and Nevada and Arizona and, anyway, and have seen, and I do get a number-one animal style. No, not anymore. I get a number-two. The, you know, just personally having seen, and locally especially, right, the one in Sparks, not our jurisdiction, but, you know, queues with tremendous challenges. The South Virginia one, which was the first one in Reno, challenges there, where they end up blocking parking spaces as the queue, the informal queue extends through the parking area. Then, the Keystone one, where, you know, as you pointed out, it comes out of the formal 25, all right, yeah, the formal 25-vehicle queue, and then kind of wraps around through the parking lot. I've seen all that firsthand. And so, you know, we were looking at this going, okay, what can we do to make sure that, one, we're not blocking parking spaces, and, two, we don't impact circulation on the site as well as spilling out onto Margrove Drive? So, it's our belief, having worked on this since, like I said, last August, that the design as currently designed and that In-N-Out's operations with their associates coming out to manage traffic, and we don't have a slide here showing it, but there is a diagram with the associates, you know, standing basically at that intersection, at that entrance, you know, kind of keeping the people from blocking the driveway and then extending the parking, sorry, the queue extending across into that area in the southeast, sorry, southwest corner, and additional 12 to 15 vehicles, as Peter suggested. It's our belief that that is more than ample queue to accommodate, you know, the needs in reality.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Long-winded answer, but.
Very helpful, though. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Delyar.
Thank you. Commissioner Delyar, thank you so much for your presentation. I had a couple of questions. One is in regards to the lumens. I know, I think we received one email from somebody saying that, why does the sign need to be so bright? Everybody's going to know In-N-Out is there. But I'm just kind of curious what it means to have that many lumens and the percentage increase in that.
Okay. So, there's actually two different issues. The email that you're referring to was about the 42-foot-tall pole sign, which is not part of the 100, 150,000 lumens per acre.
Okay, got it.
So, let's treat those, or keep those separate. So, the 100,000 lumens per acre code requirement magically disappeared from code in the update in January. Okay? So, it's not even a consideration any longer.
Ah, okay.
If these guys had applied in January, after January 8th, it wouldn't have even been a comment I would have brought up.
Got it.
Unfortunately for them, they applied in August.
In August.
And so, the 100,000 lumens per acre limitation exists for them. And so, they applied through a major deviation, which the planning commission does have the ability to grant a 50% deviation, up to 50%, which would thereby get them 150,000 lumens per acre. This is another area where the applicant has been responsive to staff requests. It's a code requirement, but I brought it up to them, and they actually wanted more lighting than 150,000 lumens per acre. And I said, well, tough luck. You can't get it more than 150 because a major deviation only gives you 50% more.
Right.
So, they worked with us to kind of reduce their lighting, to concentrate it in the northern area of the site, furthest away from the residential to the south.
Okay.
And, of course, that's where most of the activity is, so it makes sense to have, you know, most of the lighting up there.
Right.
So, in any case, that's the lighting.
Got it.
Question. The pole sign is a different question.
Got it.
And the email comment was just objecting to having a 42-foot-tall pole sign.
Right. So, thank you. I appreciate that. For this, I just want to be clear. So, the permit or the condition is for 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., but they're only open till 1:00 and 1:30 a.m. on the given days. Is that, are those lumens, when do they, when are they reduced? Is it when they close at 1:00?
So, yeah, after they close, they're required to turn off all nonessential lighting.
Okay.
And that's just a standard code requirement to turn off essentially everything other than security lighting.
Got it. Okay. And I have a couple more questions, but I'll let somebody else. Go ahead for now.
I, because mine are related, I'm going to ask my question about the applications being, let's see, what is it, 11 to 6 is what the question is, or, excuse me, the application is for, but they're only open till 1:30. If we grant this, can we put a condition that they can't, like, I mean, I understand that they're applying from 11 a.m. to 6 a.m. because that's the way it is in code. Can we put a condition in there that would cap it at 1:30? Because my concern would be that an applicant, they sell this site, the entitlement runs with the land, and then the next person who owns this space decides that they do want to have 11 a.m., 6 a.m. Is there any options available for us to cap it?
Absolutely, yeah. You're certainly welcome to add a condition of approval limiting the hours. I would ask the applicant to chime in on that as well, because that would obviously potentially affect their business operations. But, yes, you have, the planning commission has the latitude to add a condition limiting it to 1:30 or 2:00 or something along those lines.
And the way it's presented, I understand that correctly, right? The way it's presented is they're seeking the application from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., the understanding that they only really operate till 1:30. Is that, I am understanding that correctly, right?
Not exactly. That's really, and it's not your fault at all. It's just the way we notice the application. So, anytime anyone is proposing to operate outside of the standard allowed by code 6 a.m. to 11 p.m.,
Okay.
we notice it as 24-hour operations or 11 p.m. to 6 a.m. So, even though any given applicant might only be asking to operate till 11:30 or midnight or 1:00 or 1:30 or something, we still generally notice it as 11 p.m. to 6 a.m. That's just kind of our standard practice. Again, even though the applicant isn't exactly requesting that, and this applicant did not actually request full 24-hour operations, they only requested till the 1:30 that they showed today.
So, what would the permit be for then? So, if we were to grant the application with this, with the notice as it's presented, they technically would be allowed to operate essentially 24 hours?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And another reason for that, and this may be another reason to talk to the applicant, their deliveries happen after hours. They do not allow deliveries, it's my understanding, they do not allow deliveries to happen during business hours. And so, with their business hours formally going to 1:30, their after-hours deliveries would happen after that.
Okay.
So, I don't know what time those, and that's, they would need to speak to that, but it would probably make sense if we, if you are going to place a condition limiting the hours to factor in the allowed after-hours deliveries.
Okay. So, let's have the applicant come up. And just to preface this, as you know, this is a development near housing. I don't know what the housing is zoned, probably residential of some sort, but my concern is because there's housing around. And so, the idea of having 24 operations, you know, imagine you living next to 24-hour operation, it probably wouldn't be pleasant. So, to my point earlier, what are your thoughts?
Totally understand. We can agree to the limitation for operating hours to the 1:00 and 1:30, but we would request is that we allow deliveries after hours.
Okay.
And our deliveries are made onsite, where our delivery trucks will swing into the site. They won't be employing backup beepers because, again, we do a truck turning analysis to demonstrate how they approach into the site, park, unload the deliveries, so there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be essentially any noise. There's no warning beepers. They're just pulling into the site and then leaving. So, we would request that for after hours.
So, I guess, Jeff, I would need you, how would that work? Because, again, my concern is, obviously, you're the tenant now. What if you guys sell to, I don't know, McDonald's in three years?
Could it be open to the public until 1:30, open for other business operations?
If I could chime in, if that's a restriction you wanted to place, I think what you could say is, operating hours shall be limited to 1:30 a.m. Only activities that may occur onsite beyond those hours shall be limited to deliveries, you know, delivery only. Delivery only. Just to make it clear that nobody's coming in at 3:00 a.m. to get a hamburger, the only activity that will be occurring at that site will be related to their internal operations and deliveries.
Can we just clarify all things that the applicant needs to do in those off-hours, just so we don't overly restrict?
So, what do you, I mean, and also, what do those deliveries look like? Because, I mean, again, this is like, what comes to mind is the North Valleys. Obviously, this is a different situation, but the North Valleys are obviously dealing with situation with trucks all hours of the night, and it's a big problem. And so, not you guys are obviously different volume, different level, so it's not going to be the same thing necessarily, but it could still be burdened some from neighbors. So, what are we looking at here with you guys?
So, the delivery truck would be coming in off of Plum Lane, would be going in off, onto Orange Lane, then turning left into the site, then taking that drive aisle all the way east, and then pulling towards the front of the stores, front of the store in the stalls at the front of the store, or thereabouts.
So, you're not using that smaller street, what is that?
Margrove. They wouldn't be coming off of Margrove.
No? Okay. Or the other little street, which, well, I guess that's a commercial site right there, but Orange Lane?
Orange Lane has office to the west. There's no residential west of Orange Lane.
Okay. And it's, what do your deliveries look like? One truck, two trucks? Is it?
It's one delivery truck. They will unload pallets off the back of the truck at the front of the store. We just don't do it during operating hours because it just creates a conflict with customers. People are in the parking stalls, so we can't access the store properly.
Okay. How does that work on Keystone? Because you get, well, no, Keystone's all commercial, so we don't really think about that. So, would it just be deliveries then, or is there something else that you guys need?
I wouldn't want to restrict it just to deliveries. If we could allow for maintenance, you know, or deliveries after hours, after that 1:30, that would be essential for us.
Okay.
Because there is cleaning, you know, we're not having customers come in and get hamburgers after 1:30 or 1:00, but we do need to do maintenance. Maintenance is big for us and deliveries.
Okay. So, how does, because how does that work, Jeff, if we're going to do something like that? Because what I don't want is a different application to come, a nightclub to come in in five years, and they're like, well, this is 24-hour operations, so we're ready to go.
Yeah. So, Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record. What I would suggest is a condition of approval that limits the hours of operation to 1 a.m., what is it?
1.
Sunday to Thursday.
Sunday to Thursday.
Sunday to Thursday and 1:30 a.m. on Friday and Saturday nights for standard hours of operation. And then, as Mike suggested, beyond that, a clause basically saying that after those hours, the only allowed activities are after-hours deliveries and maintenance associated with standard, you know, operations of the restaurant, i.e., cleaning it up.
Yeah.
So, if you have that condition, then, you know, obviously, they're not going to be able to have their, you know, taking orders at 2:00 in the morning any day, and then they would also be allowed to have those after-hours activities, deliveries, up until, you know, any time of the night, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Let's do Basara since he hasn't gone yet.
Sure.
I was just going to follow up on this a little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Delyar, one quick question in terms of the lighting. Is that associated with that time to 1:30, or is that 6 a.m.? So?
Yeah. So, good question. The way the code reads is it basically says, after-hours lighting is limited to safety lighting. So, I think the city has a code that is set up that says they would only be allowed to have kind of essential safety lighting on after 1:30 in the morning. And clearly, you know, with those after-hours deliveries and their employees, they don't need to have the whole parking lot lit up like they would during regular operation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Basara for the record. I think everyone's asked pretty much what I wanted to ask, but mine are more clarifying questions of what folks have asked, and I would totally be in support of specifying the hours. I think because we had a applicant before his last time about hours and so forth, and I do think it's appropriate for us to be very consistent and fair. Along those lines, would it be appropriate for us to specify the entrance and exit to be Plum Lane, to be that level or to be that specific in this type of?
For the deliveries you're.
Yeah, for the after-hours. You know, just again, to Chair Villanueva's point about, like, trying to reduce or mitigate potential heartache for folks, you know, the south-facing residents.
Yeah. I mean, that is, the entrance that they mapped was to. Yeah. I mean, that is, the entrance that they mapped was to enter off of, off of Orange, from Plum onto Orange, Orange into the site.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I believe that that would be appropriate to have a condition, if you would like, not allowing entrance off of Margrave, unless, I don't know, I guess some catastrophe happened and the Orange access was closed, but-
As an exception, sure.
Within reason, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Would you be amenable to that? Okay?
Yeah. I think, I think they're folks of good faith actors, and you know, but I think to Chair Villanueva's point, who knows what the future holds, and we just want to be fair and consistent.
And I would also point out that in theory, they could enter off of Plum Lane if push came to shove.
Oh, absolutely. And for the record, Mr. Jeff, double-double grilled onion with strawberry shake, you know.
All right. Animal-style fry, or do you stay away from that?
No, I'll do it.
All right.
We're gonna do it, go all the way.
You're in for the heavy stuff. I can't do that anymore.
Do we have any commissioners virtually that have questions?
Commissioner Draklich, yeah, you guys, thank you guys for asking all those questions. I was mostly worried about traffic. I feel pretty satisfied there, and thank you for the dialogue.
Commissioner Romar?
No questions here, thank you.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I have, actually, I have quite a few questions. So I, now I'm moving on to the comments that we received from NDOT. I just want to make sure those were addressed. Let's see where they are. Okay, so I'm looking at this letter, December 24th, from NDOT. It says, please evaluate the ability to improve the eastbound Plum Lane to southbound Kitsky Lane, channelized right turn into right turn slip lane per NDOT Strategic Highway Safety Plan. And then it goes on to some stuff about a stop sign. Have we, have these all been addressed, or?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
And in fact, the improvements that they are addressing are shown on this slide here, which is a preliminary plan, as I point out in the lower left-hand corner. But that is the design that Kim Lee Horn put together in consultation with NDOT. One of the reasons it's taken so long to get to this point is working through all of the traffic issues. And we've had multiple meetings with RTC, and NDOT, and city staff, and the applicant, and Kim Lee Horn vetting all of these issues. So I would say the traffic issue is put to bed.
So it's same for RTC?
Yep.
Okay. And then the, so now brings me to my next question, which is kind of a big deal, is signs. So we obviously know that signs have been a topic of discussion a lot, not in this district or this space particularly, but just in general. And so the previous sign, what was the size? It shows that it was removed, or is it still, is the sign-
Oh, it's still there. Peter, did you have a picture of it in your-
I know what it looks like. I mean, you're fine. So the height of this new sign would be the same height-
The same height.
Is what is currently there. Okay, will it be illuminated?
I would think so, yeah, yes.
Okay, so to the point on illumination, which I know you said was different from the other discussion about illumination, the illumination of the sign, does that get shut off at 1:30? Because again, the neighborhood, it's kind of a unique space where we have a lot of public and commercial, or excuse me, it's a major thoroughfare, and then we also have the housing on the back end. And so to kind of balance that, what happens with the sign lighting and?
All the building and this pylon side?
You can come up, yeah.
Come up and, yeah.
So the pylon that we're proposing is at the northwest location of the restaurant, so it'd be right along Plum. And we can agree to the extinguishing of the illumination at 1:30.
Okay, so the sign's going to be in a different place?
Yes.
Okay.
Different place than the current sign?
Than the current sign, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, let's see here. So right, see that arrow up there?
Okay.
Yeah, that's where, that's where it's-
Is that Plum?
That's Plum.
Right, okay. So, and then that would be facing towards Plum? Or would it be facing-
Facing both, yeah, Plum in both directions.
Oh, Plum in both directions. And then, so you said you'd be agreeable to having that go dim, or you could have some light, I guess, but basically go dim at 1:30. Okay. And I think that was, actually, I do have one more question. The, so, not a huge deal, but I am interested in knowing more. The vehicle headlights, so the way that it's set up, the vehicles enter through Orange Street, or alternatively can enter through Kitsky, Kitsky, is that right? And then, so the vehicles would be facing east?
So, let's go back over to this one. So you, those three arrows show the three different entrance points into the site. So you can turn into the site off of Plum only if you're heading east. So if you're on eastbound Plum, you can turn into the site at the north.
Okay.
You can also turn into the site off of Orange Lane, or off of Margrave Drive to the south. So all three entrances into the site.
Okay, did those houses that are, that are on the-
There's only houses on the south.
South end, yeah. Those houses on the south end, they, do they get notice of all of this?
Absolutely.
Okay, and there were no objections?
No.
Okay. Because I could see how the lighting coming in from the vehicles on Plum around 8:00, 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 p.m. at night would be distracting.
And actually, this site has been really well-designed in many respects, and that's one of them. That's actually not a house directly across.
Oh.
If I'm coming in off of Plum, that's an office building, right?
Oh.
Yeah. So-
Oh, I see that now, okay.
Yeah, to the south, you have some single-family homes. You've actually got a Jack-in-the-Box restaurant furthest to the east. You've got some single-family homes. You've got a kind of a linear office building along most of Margrave. And then you've got some multifamily over to the west. Sorry, the western portion on the south of Margrave there. So it happens that if vehicles were coming in off of Plum there, those headlights would be heading towards a, an office building.
What's that corner? Is that corner house? Not a, well, it's, I mean, I could, okay, it should, I mean, I think it's fine.
Yeah, there's, and remember, on the, again, going back to the thoughtfulness that has been put into this design, you have extensive landscaping throughout this entire perimeter on the southwest and, or sorry, southeast and north. In terms of shielding headlights, well, in terms of shielding headlights is really what we're talking about here. So, yeah, with the berm and the landscaping, staff believes that any, any issues from headlights will be shielded from the adjacent residential as well as the roadways, because we also care about the passing public, right? You don't want to be driving by and have your, you know, blinded because of someone's headlights in a drive-through queue. So we often do require some kind of mounding or decorative wall or something to block those headlights. And in this case, the landscaping and the landscape berming was considered sufficient to block those headlights.
Okay, great. Was there any, Commissioner DelVR, and then Commissioner Basera?
Yeah, this is DelVR, Commissioner DelVR. One question I had, so I drove by there today, and I was coming south on Kitsky and was going to turn right onto Margrave. And there's a yield there now from people coming off of Plum that the person completely ignored and almost crashed into me.
Okay.
That's my own personal sad story for the day. But, yeah, can you, so it looks like they're doing, how are they going to mitigate that corner, I guess, is what?
This is where I would invite the Kim Lee Horn Traffic Engineer up to speak to that issue. I know it has been mitigated, and I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn last night. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm going to ask him to come up and-
Fair enough. And full disclosure, I do not eat fast food and have never eaten it in and out.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. My name is Devin Moore with Kim Lee Horn. Very excited to be here with you today. It's been a great, great experience working with staff. I'll just echo what Peter shared. It's been fantastic work with them, and they should be commended. So what you see before you is, was really a recommendation that we recommended to NDOT in their 2017 Strategic Highway Safety Plan, as, planned as state improvements across the entire state. So this, this is a safety issue across the entire state of Nevada. The exact same experience that you had. And so the recommendation that we have in best practices across the country is to have a slip lane as opposed to this sweeping right turn lane. So it takes that big, wide radius and moves it much closer to the intersection. So that way, if you're turning off of Plum onto Kitsky, your, the turn and the angle that you're coming off of the street is much more narrowed. And so instead of it being, being far, far back, you don't have to turn nearly as far. So it's a lot easier to see an oncoming vehicle. It's more recognizable that they're coming into an intersection, and it's not just this merge off of the highway, which is what these big, long, sweeping ones feel much like. So that's the improvement that NDOT was requesting, and we've had a lot of discussions with them to come up with this concept here, which helps mitigate that issue.
Perfect, thank you. And then one quick question that might be for you, I'm not sure. So there's potentially a Starbucks going in that area. Is that going to be potentially developed at the same time? Or if it's later than when the In-N-Out is going to be open, will that impact the traffic flow?
Yeah. On the traffic side, I'll just mention that the traffic study was submitted to the, to the city as well as to NDOT, and to the RTC included all of Starbucks' full build-out. And so from an analysis standpoint, we already looked at all of that.
Perfect.
But I'll let, I'll let Peter talk to the timing of it.
So I can't give you too much information regarding when Starbucks will come in. They'd be under a separate entitlement procedure-
Absolutely.
-to reject. But as Devin indicated, it was included in the traffic study-
Perfect.
-submitted to the city.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Commissioner Basera for the record. Just want to really say, I think when I look at this, this one most reminds me of the Victorian Square, Victorian location, with the residential in the south, Kitsky being Pyramid Highway, if you will, Plum Lane being Victorian. And I think, from what I've heard and the discussions, y'all have done a pretty good job trying to mitigate traffic issues. And I have no problem supporting a motion in favor of this. I think I'll just probably follow Chair Villanueva's lead on the level of specificity for the hours and after-hours and all that.
Great. Anyone remotely, any of the Commissioners remotely appearing want to say anything else, or contribute?
I'm good. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Romar.
Okay, so I think we're good for discussion at this point. Does anyone have any comments or would like to add anything to discussion? Commissioner Valtto?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Let me see if anyone, anyone else have anything to contribute? Okay, so I will, I do want to just comment. I think you guys have done a really good job on mitigating, because this is, even though I think this is a good commercial site for that type of restaurant, it is just because you have that residential behind it. It's, obviously, you have to navigate and balance kind of the nuance of the site. But I think you guys have done a good job working and mitigate some of the issues there, and I'm going to be in support. Thank you. Commissioner Valtto, you can go ahead and make a motion. Just be sure and include some of those conditions that we discussed with Mr. Foster.
If I get it wrong, let me know for the conditions. But in the matter of case number LDC 25-00006, based upon compliance of the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, alternative equivalent compliance, and major deviations subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, except that there shall be two additional conditions. One additional condition will be that the hours of operation when In-N-Out, or when the business is open to the public shall be until 1:00 a.m.
1:30, I think, right?
One, two separate times. 1:00 a.m. Monday, Sunday through Thursday, and 1:30 a.m. Friday and Saturday. After those hours, the business may still accept have deliveries go, as well as do maintenance and other business operations, but may not be open to the public. The second condition is that deliveries have to come from either, from Kitsky or Orange?
Oh, Plum or Orange.
My apology. I'm thinking about, I was thinking about In-N-Out later. From Plum or Orange, and shall not be off Margrave, except for extreme exigent circumstances. Is there a third condition? Oh, the lumen, and the lights on, the third condition is that the lights on the sign shall also be turned, on the large sign, shall also be turned off when the rest of the lights are required to be turned off, except for safety lights or whatever's required by code. Any other conditions? And with that, I can make all the findings.
This is Commissioner DelVR. I second.
Great. We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And I believe that's it. Good luck, and we look forward to it.
Madam Chair, before we move to the next item, I'm just going to go let Commissioner Jacobin know that he can come back and join us.
And maybe, maybe I'll try an In-N-Out burger one of these days.
Is that for real?
That's, that is not on the record.
Too late.
Have you never had In-N-Out, ever?
Both have.
You've never had In-N-Out?
I don't eat fast food.
You've got to make an exception.
All right, so, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. So we are now going to move forward. Item seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Who do I have presenting today?
There was no meeting since the last time we met.
Okay, great.
Nothing to report.
Great. So nothing to report there. So we will close out item seven, open up item eight, Staff Announcements.
Just a few announcements this evening. Commissioners had requested training on communications. We've reached out to our comms team, and they are going to be reaching out to the Planning Commission. They're putting together some information for us, and they will be reaching out. Also, Angela Foose and her team are putting together some training modules. One that had been requested was on ethics, and we have kind of the list that's been put together. So just when we have full agendas, we're going to make sure that we don't overload everybody on full agendas, but those will be coming up. We'll start working those into our, into our program, so to speak. So those are being worked on. Also, at our next meeting, staff will be bringing forward a potential, for your input, a text amendment related to ADUs. So that will be presented at our next meeting. As far as council actions, I think the one that the board, that this commission would be most interested in, the potential text amendment for data centers. The council did vote to not move forward with that. It ended up essentially in a tie vote. So at this point, there will be no change to the code related to text amendments. Also, the, the one-up bar conditional use permit, we've received two appeals on that, so that will be heard in April. And then the OPADAN data center appeal will be at the next council meeting on March 12.
Quick question about the appeals. I guess I can go find out. Are they, because I know that the owner wanted it to be extended. Is he one of the-
He is. So we received two appeals. One was by the business owner to appeal the condition-limiting business hours, and the second was the residents of the Montage collectively appealed.
Thank you.
Quick question, oh, sorry. Quick question, Mike, just to follow up, of course, on the data center text amendment change. I do recall Mayor Shivi mentioning that it would come back at a later date. Is that something that they would need to do on their own, or is that something that-
That's something the council would have to basically initiate to let staff know that they wanted us to bring it back forward.
Okay. So nothing that this body needs to do in the meantime?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, so we will close out item eight to open up nine. Commissioner Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. I do, given what we heard today during public comment, just really an agenda item, and you know what, I might need some information. So the gentleman that spoke during public comment, he said that there was-
Tyler Colton?
Yeah, Tyler Colton mentioned that there was conversations regarding live entertainment. Can you tell me more about that?
There, and I personally have not been involved, but there, there is a working group to talk about entertainment districts. And I can certainly bring back some information, whether staff is at a level where there's a formal presentation. I don't know if they're that far down the road, I'll find out. But I can at least provide the commission with an update.
Yeah, just an update, and then that would allow, that will allow Tyler to be able to come back and present on that item if he wants. Okay, that's all from me. Anyone else? Anyone online?
No, thank you.
Great.
Nope.
Close out item nine, open up public comments. This item is for either public comment on any action item, or for any general public comment. Doesn't look like anyone is present. Do we have anyone online?
We do not have anyone online.
Great. So we will adjourn this meeting. Do I need a motion? Motion adjourned.
So moved.
So seconded.
All in favor?
Third, aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.